I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I can welcome everybody to the meeting tonight, and if you're tuning in on Facebook, you probably didn't set your clock right because we're done.
I'm kidding, we've been five today.
Future board meetings, March 22nd at 6:00 PM here, April 26th at 6:00 PM here, and May 10th at 6:00 PM here. Under recognition, we have a recommendation to approve a $500 donation from Marion Family Automotive for Sharp Creek Robotics Program. A recommendation to approve a $500 donation from Stan and Kathy Leland for Sharp Creek Robotics Program. A recommendation to approve the $500 donation from Andrew Dixon for Sharp Creek's Robotics Program. A recommendation to approve, now get this, $332,381 grant from Bright Futures Indiana, Build, Learn, Grow Stabilization Grant from Metro North Elementary Little Knights Preschool. And also equally impressive, sorry, Little Norse Preschool, I'm sorry. Also as equally impressive for the Little Knights Preschool, we have a recommendation to approve a $171,226 grant from Bright Future Indiana, Build, Learn, Grow Stabilization Grant, and give that to Little Knights versus Little Norse. Recommendation to approve donation of a Weber Grand Piano Model WG-60 for the Norfield Choir from Valerie Boyd. And a recommendation to approve a $110 donation from Jonathan Flock for Norfield Choir.
I move to approve the donations.
Appreciate it, and I second that.
Motion and second to approve the donation, the hall people say aye.
Aye.
School recognition.
I'll go ahead and start and do a few, and I will let Mr. McDivitt as he's going to take the screen. And we'll show some things at the end, but before he does, so don't, yeah, you just sit there like that. Don't play what I'm reading, because they'll be just watching that, because that says Winter Ball 2022. There's going to be a lot of excitement right there. So I'll start with Norfield from Mr. Steiner. Congratulations to the Norfield 8th Grade Robotics Team for winning the Wabash Robotics Tournament, and of course qualifying for the state meet, and I'll talk about that a little bit more later on my report. There were several team members. Of course, you have Logan Mason Lyons, Cody Yesler, and Logan Graff. Congratulations to our 7th Grade Team, who also qualified for state with skills points. Norfield Junior High Teams are coached by Jason Lyons, so good luck to state this Saturday. Also, Norfield, congratulations to Carson Pratt for being named Indiana High School Wrestling Coaches Association Junior Academic All-State Honorable Mention. Also, congratulations to the following boys, basketball players, for making the Old Wabash County Team, Eli Crowe and Dylan Thomason, and second team, Jackson Pease, and Jake Holderman, Honorable Mention. And Mr. Steiner continues to say that he would like to say thank you and awesome work Amanda Jones, Amanda Rhodes and her staff in the Norco Kitchen. Throughout all the pandemic and staff shortages, they have done an awesome job serving the students and staff. And then Mr. McDaniel of Southwood would like to recognize Dakota Wilson for representing Southwood High School at the Isma State Instrumental Solo and Ensemble Contest at North Central High School in Indianapolis. She earned a silver rating for her flute solo. Also from Southwood, congratulations to Cole Weiner and Jason Bocrecic for being honored at the Region 5 Football Junior Class All-State Team. And continuing on with Southwood, congratulations to our Southwood Mercy Boys Knights. They took the sectional basketball title Saturday with a win over Lakewood Christian. Each game Tuesday, Friday, and Saturday were hard fought, competitive, and could have gone to either team. Congrats to Coach Burris and the crew and our athletes for their success. This is the third straight sectional title taken by the Knights. The Knights' next play at regionals at Frankfurt High School this Saturday, and we finish at 10:00 AM. And then I will let Mrs. Moore mention the ones that she has.
We have 10 artists with artwork on display in the State House in the rotunda for the Celebration of Youth Art Month, and the students are Grant Abel, Kelly Norman, Addison Chamberlain, Avery Davis, Gage Cook, Kenzie Dietrich, Alyssa Johnson, Rigan Woods, Caitlin Wilfermy, and Braylon Frieden. Five of those, all of the artists were invited for a reception there at the State House a couple weekends ago, and five artists were there along with Mrs. Gray, and one of our artists, Grant Abel, received the Award of Honorable Mention for the elementary division K-2, so it's pretty exciting.
Awesome. All right, thank you. And now, I think we'll turn it over to Mr. McDivitt, share some of his things at White's Junior Senior High School.
Thank you, Mr. Keefer. So Mrs. Feltline, who is our official title, is in-school suspension supervisor, but she wears a lot of different hats. And so one of the things she does in coordination with Mrs. Updike, our girls' math teacher, is they organize a winter ball every year for our students. Typically, it's been in December, we did not have it last year for obvious reasons. But we had it this past Thursday, and there's a lot of work that goes into it from Mrs. Feltline's standpoint. Over the years, she and those who assist her have accumulated a variety of formal dress attire, both for boys and girls, and so for the weeks leading up to it, she takes them down, takes the girls down, they go through the dresses, try to pick out something that they like, that fits for them, the whole nine yards. And so, not that this surprises any of us, but I think sometimes we feel like, you know, the kids that go to White's are different than all the other kids. And in some ways, they are because of their past, but in many ways, they're just teenagers, and they love dressing up. So when they come in, it's in the hots and in the cafeteria where we set it up. I mean, just like most teenagers when they're dressed up, they stand taller, they act more adult-like. And it's, so it's really cool. And I'm not, this is like a two-minute video, I'm not going to show the whole thing, but I'll show a little bit. But the best thing that happened as a result of this, at the end of the evening, White's has what they call campus supervisors, which, lack of a better word, it's like, it's who the house parents would call in if they need help. And so the campus supervisors that were on duty that night afterwards were tearing things down, but things were, one of them came over to me and said, I don't know if it was a good thing or not, but I heard a couple of kids say that this was the best night of their life. And so obviously, the thing can be discouraging, it's like, wow, this is the best night of your life. But on the other hand, it's just really cool that we can, you know, make something like this happen. So when I say we, almost all the staff pitched in in some form or another, but really, Mrs. Feltline does the heavy lifting here to make sure this happens. So let me just, again, this is a couple minutes long, I'm just going to play a little bit. If any dancing breaks out, Mr. Keefer, you cannot, because you have knee injury.
I'm ready to go.
I will say, compared to two years ago, there was very little dancing. These kids really got into the picture. So I cannot say the name, the DJ, but the DJ we use is a former student at White's from like 15 plus years ago, is our DJ, so. So anyhow, it's a great night, and just like most high school principals, you kind of take a deep breath and say, ah, it's another dance, okay? But at the end of the night, it is, it is worth everything that we put into it, so. Thank you. It was really nice. Can I share one more thing, Mr. Keefer?
Sure.
Let's see if I can do this right, and that's not what I wanted to show you. So my daughter, that's my daughter there, she works, she's, she works at Indiana Westland, but as you can see, all of that stuff is hers. And I asked her like a month or so ago, hey, Sarah, would you want to come over to school the day of our dance and just, you know, start doing nails for girls? And so she did, she took the afternoon off, she came over, and this is in my office, but it was just fun just to listen to Sarah talk to the girls. I mean, my daughter has a lot of great people skills, but just to hear her talk to the girls and get them, you know, get excited about getting her nails done on the dance. So that was kind of the cool thing for me as dad, just to watch my adult daughter do that. But the girls, it's a different one, but yeah, it was, it was really cool. So anyhow, that's it.
If I can steal that back then, you can.
Yep. Hold on, I'm sorry, sorry, I got it wrong, you got it?
I maybe should. Yeah, there we go.
All right, all right. We will move on to public comments for agenda items only. I'm guessing there are a whole lot of people that called.
Well, they have 11 viewers.
11 viewers, so they did pay attention to, yeah. Because all we ever really did is say it in this meeting, so. Have I wasted enough time for them to catch up to what they want to say, if anything?
Yes.
Okay. And since I haven't heard anything, we'll move on to consent agenda items, approval of the minutes from our last meeting on February 22nd.
I move to approve the last meeting.
Motion and second to approve the donation from our last meeting, all the people say aye.
Aye.
Claims.
I'll finish with the snow, Chris.
Hopefully.
I've seen it since March, so be quiet.
And people ask your fortunes behind that.
I'll move to approve claims, I have my questions.
I second that.
Yeah, motion and second to approve the claims, all the people say aye.
Aye.
Payroll.
Nothing different with payroll, it's a little bit higher, but like I said before, we're starting to get some of those winter sport coaches stipends in, so.
Motion to approve that also.
Aye.
Motion, second to approve payroll, all the people say aye.
Aye.
Financial summary.
Just the normal end of the month for February kind of shows where our balances were at the beginning of the month, beginning of the year, beginning of the month, and at the end of the month. And so still, things are trending in the right direction from that standpoint. Nothing to prove here, so.
Yep, yep, you're right, I'm just looking at the, the self-insurance, that comes off after this, you're right. I mean, I know it's already, I know it's already zero, but I still, I don't like looking at it. I don't want it on this account.
I don't know if that is possible, just because it's a fund that we have used, and so.
I just don't like seeing it there.
It will never go away, because it is a fund, but.
Good old second. All right, so we'll move on to personnel then. Under resignation, we have Tim Miller, custodian at Southwood Elementary School. Employment, James Ollinger, junior high wrestling coach at Wabash High School.
Norfield.
I am not reading these well today. We don't even have a Wabash High School. How about James Ollinger, junior high wrestling coach at Norfield High School? Amy Long Cook, Norfield High School. It's because of the time change.
That's weird.
April Howard, paraprofessional at Metro North Elementary. For retirement, Teresa Rubaker, bus driver from the north, and had this effect at the end of school year.
And again, we just want to thank especially our Teresa Rubaker for all the time that she has spent with us as, as a bus driver, and that means that we can have more people sign up to become bus drivers. So see Miss Melissa Ball, if you're interested in doing that. And any board member too that wants to sign up, hey, I'm going to work something out too, so. Just came a little bit harder to get the license. Yeah. Came a few things, drive a little bit, it's all good. Possible.
I move to approve the HR report.
Second, Matt.
Motion and second to approve HR, all the people say aye. Partly the career center report, Matt's not here, I don't think he gave us anything, so we'll move on to superintendent's report, Mr. Keefer.
Yeah, I just want to mention, this is just kind of fantastic how things have gone over the last several years, but with robotics, I call it the 2021-2022 state bound. We actually have nine, nine teams going this Saturday to Lucas Love Stadium. Of course, last year, it was virtual, but this year, we have nine teams. So just to let you know, Southwood Elementary has two teams, they have a 4th grade and 6th grade team. Southwood Junior Senior High has one team, the 8th grade team. And let me just mention some of the coaches here too. For Southwood Elementary, it's Erica Tyson, Kelly Baird, and Amy Schmidt. And at Southwood Junior Senior High School, it's Jody Carr and Dan Wright. And at Sharp Creek, they have four teams going, the blue, the gray, the white, and the black. And that's Amber, Kevin Bretzman, and Joel Nestler. And then at Norfield, we have a 7th and 8th grade team going, and they're both coached by Jason Lyons, and I think you heard that earlier from the recognition from Mr. Steiner. And also just want to recognize again, regional bound, the Southwood Boys Basketball Team. We did say it was three-peat, but I also believe it's the fifth time they've won sectional in six years. So three-peat, but five out of six years, so that's excellent. And then, of course, we have coming up, Norfield Southwood Band and Choir Honor Band performances this Friday night. A lot of excellent musicians there too. And also, just want to mention, we have, and I had this on my phone, but I'm going with it. But also, we have the Norfield seniors are going to be going to Boston. I think they leave on Sunday, you guys have already approved that, but that's coming up. And then the Southwood seniors are going to Fission Ford, Tennessee, in April. So it's great that they're all able to do that, and those are great memories for those kids. I appreciate you always approving those field trips and those extended field trips. That's where I want to have this time.
All right. Curriculum report, Mr. Gray, do you have?
Yeah, I've got a couple things to share.
Thanks.
Yeah, and the board packet, there's shit and, I'm going to kind of go out of order here.
You can do that one.
Press for these.
You want to do that first?
Yeah. I just wanted to make the board aware, this was in the newspaper, Mr. Keefer, maybe Saturday's paper, Saturday's newspaper. The, I'll give you the condensed version of it. Several libraries have started to pool their resources for digital sources, because, you know, obviously you don't have to be at the physical library. And so libraries for Fort Wayne, the Wabash, across the state. And so the vendor for that is, is one we use for our, our personal school libraries. And so our kids can work with that, but they couldn't access the digital library, because that's a, you have to have a library card to do that. Well, the vendor really encourages libraries to try to work out, reach out to schools. And so we found, we found a library to do that. We found a library to sponsor our schools so that all MSC students can access this, they call it Connect, but it's just this digital library that they can get to on the cloud. And so we've got juvenile and young adult things that kids can check out there. They can check it out anytime on their iPad, and it automatically, when it finishes, it just returns it back to them. And so we're just really excited to find somebody to do that, to offer, they say thousands, I haven't looked at all of them, but it's a lot, it's a lot. And anytime you can get, especially in a rural county where you get access to all that stuff, we just think it's amazing to promote that. And so we want to give a special thanks to, I want to be careful to say it correctly, Palasguy County. I've got a, got a ringer in the room to make sure I say it correctly. Because they were willing to step out and do that, and so the vendor connected us. It was funny, the vendor connected, asked me on a Tuesday, hey, what would you think about us reaching out to libraries? And I said, you know, well, they're not going to find, in my mind, I thought, well, they're not going to find one. And then sure enough, by Friday, they had found one and connected us. And so it was just that fast. And so just really excited about that. So if you see in this paper, somebody asked there, you have to kind of go back down to that.
So we weren't able to do this locally?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. We actually learned about this from a partnership that Wabash Carnegie Library has with another local school system, and it came at no cost. There's no cost for student membership, there's no cost for any of that stuff. The libraries buy the books, like Wabash Carnegie would own some of the books, but so would other public libraries. And so actually, that's where we got the idea, because they partner with local school and give their students free access. However, we, we tried to work with them after a couple meetings, we went to their school board, and, sorry, library board, yeah, sorry, and made a presentation there, but they denied our request. They denied access. And so we thought, that's kind of what encouraged the vendor to go do that. The vendor was kind of surprised, because they had not had that happen yet. And so that's why they were prompting us, like, they kept on us about that. And so when they came up with this idea, I thought, well, I mean, if you can find a library to do that. And sure enough, the people of Palasguy County stepped up, and, and we have, again, it's a, it's a win-win for students. I mean, there's no cost, there's no work, you just literally, our students would literally just push a button that they would use to access books in our library at the school. They don't realize that it's not at our school, it just connects into those things. And we get to monitor them all. Jennifer Neal, our head librarian, already kind of looked through to make sure age-appropriateness and stuff, so that we make sure they match the values of our community. And so, and plus, I think Palasguy County has some excellent people there, and so I kind of trust their values as well. Based on the people I know from that area. So, so you should see that pressure loosen, if somebody asks any questions, please have them contact me. I'm kind of the one that's kind of been organizing that and might know the most.
And the high schools are, they'll, they'll become aware of this at all.
That's right, and so at the high school level, they can already check them out. And so they've already been able to check them out on their iPads. And so we've let librarians know at all the schools, and we're trying to let the English teachers know to try to get word out. We don't expect a huge following for this, it's probably a niche group that'll do that at the older grades, but even those handful of kids that might do it, you know, to give them access to this, it's, it's really cool. It's really cool, and so.
So what's, I mean, just all different titles and all different books?
Yeah, primarily at the, at the high school level, it's more the classics, and so not quite the excitement. But once you get to the, like, the elementary, the juvenile, like, they're a lot more kid-friendly kind of books that they're going to enjoy. But there are some, and they come with audiobooks, and they're not audiobooks like Siri Red, like robotic, like they're actual actors reading them, and so it's quite a, quite a wide range. And to be honest, we found about this, how long were we doing this, Mr. Keefer? It was about three years ago that we tried to get this system to work with Carnegie Library. And every year, they'd added more books, like, not just Wabash, but like the, the other group has. So I don't see this slowing down, I feel like this is kind of me the way of the future, and so. They say thousands, I would, I would assume soon to be tens of thousands, as we get other libraries and people.
That was in the paper I saw, wasn't it?
Did you notice that?
That was in the paper.
Yeah, but.
That's what you got right there.
Yeah, the vendor put it together, they wanted to promote this because they want more people to access the books, so.
Yeah, that was nice.
So yeah, so there's one part to that, and then if you look on my report, we are, as an administrative team, we've been really talking about trying to narrow down our focus as far as what we're going to do academically, and the, and the term literacy kept coming up. And so that is, that's going to be our focus point, is promoting literacy. And one way we wanted to do that was to try to make sure we had access to materials, not just digital ones, but also print. And so we're kind of, us old timers remember that there used to be a cycle, like a six-year cycle of, you know, adopting science this year, and social studies that year. And so we're currently in the math cycle, and so we sent math teachers to go look at the textbooks to get some of the, get some of that, and so we'll actually be bringing the math here shortly. But today, I want to bring the findings from the social studies committee, and you can see kind of the notes there. We have, we've been at this for about a year with the social studies people, and so they've explored them, and they've looked hard, and so we're going to make this recommendation to you guys here in a month or so. We're, we want to leave it out for four weeks to look at, but because of the way spring break falls, they're actually going to have a couple more weeks. So at the end of April, we'll come back with a formal recommendation. But this is just to let people know that we are looking at some, some materials, and we have print copies of those here at central office that members of the public can come look at and check out if they want to. We have parent representatives that are currently have some of those materials too that are looking at those. I just know in today's age, everybody kind of gets real attentive when we talk about curriculum and things. And so purely transparent, we've been looking at it for a while. And so if anybody wants to, board member or club member of the public wants to see those, we have those, we'll have those here from now until, we'd like for them to check them out now in a week prior to that board meeting, so that that way we have a chance to respond to them and make our final recommendation to you guys.
This has to do with printed text.
Correct.
So there'll be a set of 30 in class.
Correct.
To be taken home if somebody wants to take them home.
Yep, yep. And you'll notice that some places, some classes didn't want to buy books, and so they're still using the prior books and some of the materials they've kind of accrued along the way. But yeah, printed textbooks. Several, you kind of have a wide range. Some of our teachers really want to have textbooks on hand, and some of our teachers really enjoy having them visual too. They feel like that connects with the students. And so I feel like that's healthy, as I look at the big picture, because students that prefer the print are going to get a chance to access it that way in some classes, and students have the digital, like, we're given options to those kids, because they're going to have to be able to read something on the screen, and they're going to have to be able to read paper, so I appreciate the time.
I'm curious, studies been done, people learned that it's holding print?
With, as with most studies, it depends on what they want to find when they go look. Most of the digital research was set up prior to the iPad becoming such a useful thing, and so reading books on computer laptops is not very convenient. And so a lot of the early year studies, 10, 15 years ago, will say, yeah, kids don't learn as well reading visually. But now that we're reading on Kindles and iPads, and it's much more mimicking what paper looks like, there's a lot of research that's, that shows that it produces positive impacts as well. I think, my, my personal opinion just off the top of my head, regardless of it, kids are going to do that, right? That's, I bet, I bet our kids are probably getting most of their news media from Facebook and TikTok and Twitter and whatever else, and so we have to engage them where they're going to be. But that doesn't mean we should sacrifice the academic ratings as well, so, I don't know.
That's not where they're getting their news?
Yeah. I'd like to think not, but I think that, like, that's where they're at. I think probably even some adults might live in that area. So I'll bring a formal recommendation for the social studies materials at the, at our board meeting at the end of the meeting. And this is a chance for public.
So the number that you order, is that based on what recommendation or?
So you'll notice that, are you talking about why there's 30?
Yep.
So buying textbooks is, is cost, I mean, it's costly, and so if we buy 25 now and we end up losing two and somebody uses one, and you're like, and so 30 is a general round number. Most of our classes are in low twenties, 2021, and so it just gives teachers extras in case they have to send one home, and one doesn't come back, and one gets destroyed. So that's for that concern.
All right, we'll move on to new business, and I have a feeling you're going to talk again. Recommendation to approve the 2022 summer school courses. Let's go address that.
I'll let Mrs. Moore address these.
I will be addressing it. So we're looking at offering similar experiences for our own choice of students, like we did last year. We had roughly about 200 kids participate in some sort of activity last year, whether it be through what I would say more of a traditional summer school, where it's an academic focus, or our Minds in Action, which is an enrichment focus. But we're looking at, we'll be that from the end of May through June, just Monday through Thursday. And then offer also for that academic portion, parents the option of either half-day or all-day in partnership with YMCA. I'm not sure if that was the first year we had done that as well. We'll offer the half-day, we've always had it full-day.
Yeah, I'd say the other highlights are the expansion of the Minds in Action program, which will do some exploring, different parts across Indiana, right?
Yes, so our younger group will stay close to home, just afternoon experiences. And then our older students will have two campouts. One in Southern Indiana, where we're looking at some caving, and then at the Indiana Dunes, the other two-day, two-day camp.
Then if you go ahead and go to the secondary page, Mrs. Boone is kind of been in charge of the secondary summer school, has taken that over, and it'll be, continue the same offerings that we've had in the past, will have driver's education, will have the opportunity for credit recovery, will also have the opportunity for advanced, advanced credit as far as maybe trying to work ahead, or maybe a class that fit in their schedule, and some other opportunities that we may not offer through Indiana Online Academy, and then we'll have the summer ag program as well. And again, these are all offerings, and a lot of that depends on the actual number of enrollment that we have for those students, because we have to have a certain ratio to be able to get reimbursement from the state, so.
We won't do them, Chris, if we aren't getting a reimbursement.
Yeah, first like summer ag, that type of, mostly the secondary level stuff. We don't, Indiana Online, it doesn't, Indiana Online doesn't really matter, because that's handled a little bit differently through the state, but like the edmentum and the ag, and driver's ed does not impact us as well. But our goal is to have enough students to make sure that these programs can operate, but in the past, there's been times where we haven't had enough and had to not offer it.
Is it hurtful to have kids try and graduate early by doing some of this?
They don't necessarily graduate early, that's not really the encouragement or the focus there, more of it is to fill in gaps that maybe we don't offer, or they get a schedule that's really tight, and they may need to take a class online to be able to get the classes that we offer, especially if they may go to an internship or do something like that, just to fill those gaps. Would like that, and then that way we can start opening up and looking for staffing for these positions.
You have not got staff, and any ideas you could fill all that?
We did it last year, and that was way bigger. I mean, last year, we went all the way up to sixth grade, and so we're only going up to third grade, so I would hope that staffing would not be an issue, but I don't know.
I heard you have teachers around.
Yep.
A grant money for that, is that a lot of that grant money?
So what we'll do is we'll get reimbursed from the state, and then we'll supplement anything through some of the that we have.
Should be cost neutral for the mystery.
Yeah.
And teachers don't like to give up their summer, but elementary teachers just love their kids so much, and they can tell you, they can tell you, like, high school, let me tell you, no, not. Elementary teachers, like, they all understand just the power of that extra month with some of those kids, and they are more than happy to try to work with them, and so I, we won't have, yeah, I don't think we'll have much trouble filling those positions.
And in the past, financially, typically, it used to be that the state would actually reimburse us a hundred percent or more, but because the budgets are smaller, and because more people are doing it, it's not as much, so.
Typically, you get reimbursed about sixty percent.
But three or four years ago, it was over a hundred percent.
Yeah, it was probably over that, but when I first started doing it, it was over a hundred percent of, so.
But yeah.
But you got more people, they never changed the budget as far as the appropriations, so you got more people doing summer school, it's just taking that away, so you get about sixty percent back.
But it's still important to do it, so.
It is, and it'll be cost neutral this year, and for hopefully another year to be in.
Motion to approve the summer school, it's presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the summer school course descriptions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item on new business, recommendation to approve the Southwood Senior Crypt of Pigeon Forge, Tennessee, April twenty-fourth to twenty-seven, this year.
I move to approve.
Motion and second to approve the Southwood Senior Crypt of Pigeon Forge, all in favor, say aye. We have no unfinished business or board policy, public comment.
We're on the five, you're welcome. I'm assuming it was me talking. There you go.
All right. I have two board members. On those larger grant dollars, early on, we, there's a discussion, now that's, that's already been decided where that's all going.
No, not all of it. A good chunk of it, but not all of it. It's helped pay for, we have employees now that get aside from that, and so. Like in preschool? Oh, I'm sorry, is that what you're asking? Oh, I was thinking about a different grade.
You were saying about something else.
Sorry. Medical waters.
I don't wait since what you were saying.
All right, well, I guess that means we're adjourned.